Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the city council meeting. Want to adjourn the special meeting of the city council. Oh, that's right, yes. Just for the record, we are going to reconvene back into closed session after the regular meeting. So anyways, we have unfinished business, but also wanted to announce by a vote of 4-0, with council member Detrick being absent, the city council authorized and directed the city attorney's office to defend the case of Madrid Arjadejos versus City of Elk Grove, Superior Court, case number 34201980003068. And want to call the regular city council meeting to order at 6:26 PM. And Mr. Clerk, if you can read the metro replay.
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting in Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel 14 on Friday, February 15th at 1:00 PM, and Wednesday, February 20th at 6:00 PM. As being closed caption, it will be webcast at SACMetroCable.TV. City council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at ElkGroveCity.org. For members of the audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the city council meeting. City council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person, so that all present will have time to participate. City council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular noticed agenda item as it may deem necessary. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please complete one of the blue speaker cards, which can be found at the back of the room, and provide it to the assistant city clerk prior to consideration of the agenda item. Thank you, Mayor.
Awesome. Roll call, please.
For the roll call, council member Nguyen.
Here.
Council member Detrick is absent. Council member Suon.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hume.
Here.
And Mayor Lee.
I am here. And next item is pledge of allegiance. We have troop 293. Why don't you step on up and lead us on pledge?
Can you salute? Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. 1.3, a moment of silence. At every city council, regular city council meeting, the council would like to invite members of the public to join us in a moment of silence. So if you could join us, please. Thank you very much. And next item, please.
Take us to section two, approval of the agenda.
Okay, got an agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstention. All right, next item?
We have no closed session items under section three, which will take us into section four, presentations and announcements, starting with item 4.1, which is presentations in recognition of Black History Month. First of these items, if I could invite the president of the Sacramento NAACP, Betty Williams, and the first vice president of the Sacramento NAACP, Aliyan Murphy Hassan, to come up to the podium, and I believe council member Nguyen will meet you up there.
Right, let's see, is this on? Nope, this on? Yeah? Okay. I have the privilege and the honor to do this. You know, a little bit about these two ladies. I've worked with them in the community for well over 15 years now, and I've seen the amazing work that they do, and not just our city here in Elk Grove, but all across the region, in the Sacramento region, from working with communities, to working with young people, to mobilizing the community together, to even leading marches and organizing walks in the community about all the different things that affect the African-American community, but the community overall. And so, we have the honor of recognizing Black History Month this month in February. And just so that I can give you a little bit of history, it wasn't until 1976 that February was designated as Black History Month. But more so than that, there are a lot of whereas's in here, and one of the most important whereas's I want to tweet is just at the end, where it says, "Whereas it is important to take the time to learn from the many lessons found in history's failures, successes, disappointments, and triumphs, as we strive as a community to pursue an inclusive vision and maximize our potential to positively shape this world." And I thought that was still fitting for these two individuals here, because through all of it, all of the blood, sweat, tears, happiness, and joy, they stood with the community no matter what. And this is truly an honor for me, because I have not only worked with them, but I get to be the person to present this to them. So please join me in standing up and applauding to this wonderful opportunity here. (APPLAUSE). Can I ask that my colleague Sasso join me down here as well, too?
Hey, good to see you, Betty. Good to see you. Thank you so much. Good for you guys to be here. Thank you. All right.
On behalf of the greater Sacramento NAACP, I would like to thank you, Aliyan and I both, for this honor. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
I feel like Verizon. Can you hear me now? For this honor and this privilege and this proclamation. And I have to tell you, I have definitely seen the growth and the direction of Elk Grove. You know, I'm here all the time, making sure that we're on that direction of diversity and inclusion, and so I am just very, very happy to see that you recognize many of those points, and you have moved in that direction. And thank you so much for your ongoing support for our prayer breakfast as well, and I see that you have already started to embrace the NAACP with this year's prayer breakfast. So thank you so much on behalf of our branch.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right, our next presentation is in recognition of Irene B. West. Many of you have heard of this legend, and I believe she is here. What you... So I'm gonna read the resolution being presented by the city council. Irene B. West, "Whereas the community supports the development of our youth and cherishes educators, our churches are educator who guide generations to foster understanding through instruction, and who inspire students to expand their knowledge base and pursue continuing education. And whereas Irene West joined Elk Grove Elementary School in 1962, and was the first African-American teacher in the Elk Grove Unified School District, Irene serves as a force of positive transformation to our community and served the district for 27 years, guiding young adults to become responsible citizens, and imparting a legacy of educational excellence as a teacher in Elk Grove. In Elk Grove, James McKee Floren Prairie Elementary, and principals at Consummus River Franklin Elementary School. And whereas Irene has been a pioneer, sharing a vision to the benefit of all who have met her, and she has touched the lives of thousands of students, parents, colleagues, staff, serving as a dedicated professional inspirational leader and thoughtful mentor, earning the deserved accolades of having the Irene B. West Elementary School named in her honor." Now, therefore, do resolve that the city council of the City of Elk Grove hereby recognizes and celebrates Irene West for her decades of service to the Elk Grove Unified School District, and extends the utmost appreciation, esteemed, and respect thanking Irene West for her tireless contribution as a leader and friend of the community of Elk Grove. Ma'am, thank you so much, and if I can invite the whole entire city council to come up and come down and present the resolution to you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much.
West, very pleased, honored to meet you, dear. Congratulations, please.
I chose this one, because you're an educator, so that's very special. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. May I have a few words?
Yes, absolutely.
Right. From the very bottom of my heart, I want to thank Mayor McHume and the council. It was 57 years ago that I came to this district as first grade teacher at Elk Grove Elementary School. And the second year that I was here was McKee Elementary School. I think, can you hear me? All right.
There you go.
Because I was about to face them.
Okay.
Okay.
There it is.
Oh, okay. The second year, the first, second, and third grade teachers moved to McKee School, and that was the first year McKee was in existence. It was only in elementary school, no kindergarten, but first, second, and third. And tonight, there are three students that I taught as first graders, and they are present here tonight. The first is Tom Mann. Tom, would you stand? The next is Joan Mann. John told me a few minutes ago that she thought, she said, "I thought I was in your first grade. I was in your first class when you came to the district, but you were in my second class, Joan." And then David, David is the third. David, I can't remember your name. Commerce, David, first grader. Wonderful, wonderful. And thank you so much. They were even at, two of them were even at my, along with Pat Pinkerton, was at the dedication of the school 18 years ago. But also, I want to thank the Linda Mae Mann Lima Foundation. That, you can give them applause, they are doing such a great job of documenting all of the history, and they have included me in that history. I'm humbled by it, and I thank you from the very bottom of my heart. I'm looking forward to other things that you will be doing. Thank you. And for those who have come, I have the principal of Irene B. West School who is here. Would you please stand, Mr. McNeil? And then also, the principal, she had to be...
I'm right here.
Oh, no, she's all right. She has been principal for many years, and this is the second year that she had, first year she has not been principal, but sadly, and she has a PTA meeting right up the street at Zenda School. So thank you for coming. And then I have parents who are here with their children. Would you please stand, so we can... Right, right. And then teachers, teachers that are here, that have been at the school, maybe not now, but you have taught at Irene B. West Elementary School, would you please stand? So from the very bottom of my heart, oh, no, I'm sorry, and vice principal, vice principal. Right, right. But thank you, thank you so very much. I feel so honored to be a part of this rich history that's right here in this Elk Grove Unified School District, and from the bottom of my heart, I thank you with all my heart and soul. Thank you.
Thank you so much, ma'am. Okay, our next presenter is Maureen Craft.
Good evening, Mayor Lee and council members. My name is Maureen Craft, and I'm excited to be here tonight. Tonight, I get to talk about an amazing young artist by the name of Aleah Siddique. Aleah is a 22-year-old self-taught artist who had graduated from Hiram Johnson High School in Sacramento Unified School District. And what I love about her is that she is going to be the first African-American artist to make history in Elk Grove. She'll be the first African-American artist, black artist, to have her work shown in a free space in Elk Grove. So that alone in Black History Month is amazing. Ms. Siddique painted this fine piece of work that we'll be unveiling here soon, in under two hours, at our inaugural Martin Luther King Jr. Breakfast, which was hosted by Kendra Lewis and a couple of others of us in the community. I would like to bring Ms. Siddique up to the podium. It is only fitting that she has a couple of words to say before we talk about her work.
I don't know who to address right now. Hi. Hello. Talk to the whole room. I'm super, super just thankful for you guys to have me there. Thank you, Kendra, for, you know, setting that up, but this is such a big deal. I really enjoyed painting it in the first place, but being able to pay tribute to one of the people who are responsible for me being where I am now, such a big deal, and just the fact that it is going to be up in a public space is truly amazing. I feel like Martin Luther King is such a good example of where we have come from, and also where we are going. I think that it's a good reminder that, yes, we have gone very far, but there is a lot more to do. And this is a personal reminder for myself, and hopefully for you all, to continue to live his dream. And I titled the piece, I titled it after, you know, it starts with a dream, and it's truly up to us to take action from that dream and continue that forward. And yeah, so I really thank you so much for having me, and let's unveil this thing. Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Before you leave, let's have the council come down and take a quick picture.
Okay, cool. Sounds good.
Hi. Congratulations. This is fantastic.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you so much. That's beautiful. Thank you so much. All right.
Where's it gonna hang at? Where's it gonna be presented?
We're gonna, we're gonna find a nice visible, we're gonna find a nice visible location that's open to the public in one of our buildings here on this campus, so.
Nice. Thank you.
All right, next presenter.
That'll take us on to item 4.2, which is a presentation to the Elk Grove Police Department K9 Foundation, and I'd like to invite up representatives from Dreaming Dog Brewery.
Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Hume, council member Suon, and Nguyen. Greetings. My name's David Brown. My wife Elizabeth and I are the principal owners of Dreaming Dog Brewery. Each of you are likely aware of our business, its relationship to the CNU Medical Center proposal, and the ramifications of this proposal on our business, but that's not why we're here tonight. We're here for something different. Part of our business plan from its inception has been to find ways of giving back to the community. And we've had, as such, we've had our customers participate along with us in food donations that went to the Redwood Food Closet following the fires in Santa Rosa. We did pet food and supplies collections for the Redding and Lake County fires with support from the Consumers Community Services District Fire Department. Pet food and supplies collected for the Butte Humane Society in response to the Paradise Fires, with support from local businesses, Be Kind K9 and Raquel's Pet Treat Shop, and participating in the resilience Butte County Proud IPA project to raise funds for the Sierra Nevada Campfire Relief Fund. Tonight, we completed a donation that is a bit closer to home. The dog that inspired the name of our business was Mason. He's a Belgian Malinois that's no longer with us. He was the same breed primarily used by the officers of the Elk Grove Police K9 Unit. Before opening our business, we met and befriended several of the officers and canines of the police K9 Unit, which inspired this donation plan. In January of 2018, two men from Triple J Brewing Supplies, Joseph Paradies and Jeremiah Sheckler, came to Dreaming Dog Brewery. They discussed their plan to grow hops in Elk Grove on the historic Mayon Ranch, which, by the way, Tom Mayon, oh, unfortunately...
We were with Mr. West.
Unfortunately, he left, but Tom is one of the, you know, one of the principal owners, along with the rest of his family. But they had an active hop yard on their property from the late 1800s up until 1920, when prohibition and the sinking of the Titanic, of all things, changed their business model, and they ended up becoming more of a ranching-oriented business. Joseph and Jeremiah were looking for brewers that were interested in using hops from their first harvest on the Mayon Ranch, and we expressed our interest, and over the next six months, had the opportunity to visit the new hop yard and to witness the progress of their plannings. My wife and I spent the ensuing period discussing what we would do with these hops. We decided to brew a California Lager using fresh hops from this new Elk Grove Hop Yard. Fresh hops impart a very unique hop character to beers, and they, as they have hop oils present that are lost in the drying and pelletizing process. Then, the community became part of our plan. We reached out to Officer Dan Emerson and asked if we could name our beer the Elk Grove K9 California Lager, with the intent of donating $1 to the Elk Grove Police K9 Association from every sale of this product. To our delight, our proposal was green-lighted by the K9 Association. As such, we have an Elk Grove Brewery using Elk Grove hops to brew a California Lager to benefit an Elk Grove nonprofit that cares for the retired Elk Grove Police Canines. We received a 20-pound batch of freshly picked hops from Joseph and Jeremiah on the last Saturday of July 2018. We brewed our California Lager the following Monday, two days later. Using these unique hops, we released the Elk Grove K9 Lager to coincide with the Mayon Ranch Hops and Beer Festival, which was part of the Elk Grove History Week, to celebrate the return of hops to Elk Grove and the Mayon Ranch. This January, we sold the last, the next to the last bottle of our beer. We calculated the donation amount due at $988, but made the decision to round the amount up to an even $1,000. I would like to thank Joe and Jeremiah of Triple J Brewing Supplies for producing excellent hops that made our beer possible. And that brings us to our presentation. We are pleased to present a check for $1,000 and the last bottle of the Elk Grove K9 California Lager to the Elk Grove Police K9 Association. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks. Dan?
Sir?
Thank you. Thank you so much. So that was the pretend one. I do actually have a real check. So, Dan, and I'll give you that one, and we also have one of our anniversary glasses in there, so that you can use that to enjoy the beer. But, and then the very last thing I'd like to say before we go is, one additional note, on May 19th, Dreaming Dog Brewery is going to be hosting its first annual car show, and all the fees raised are donated to the Elk Grove Police K9 Association as well. Excellent. Thank you very much.
Dave, before you take off, thank you so much for doing this. I had an opportunity to try that lager out at Tom Mann's Beer Fest. It's delicious. It was bitterly cold that night, but you couldn't affect that. But what, it's not, it's a little more circuitous than farm-to-table, but how neat is it that he grows the hops, that then you brew into a beer, that then you take some proceeds of that and put it right back to some four-legged people serving the community? That's a wonderful thing, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I mean, if I could just add on to that, you've already stated all the examples you've done. You're, to me, you're a fantastic example of a business giving back to the community. And so, we really thank you for all that you've done in our community and in Elk Grove. We love your beer. I, too, was out there at the Mann Ranch, so it was very good. Anyway, I just, I couldn't have, I just really appreciate all that you do, really. Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is my question. Who gets the last bottle?
Dan.
Ah, okay.
Congratulations.
Actually, actually, he's off today, so he can actually go and enjoy it.
Thank you so much, Dave.
Thank you.
All right, let's move to the next item.
Section five, public comment.
Okay, first speaker is Mrit Sanhu. Following Mrit is Boyce Jeffries.
I had two points today, but I'm gonna do three, because that was an awesome representation of how members of our community have opened businesses using resources found here in Elk Grove, and then putting it back into our community. And so, with that, I'm just gonna go put it out there, I oppose the hospital that's being built on the property that they are currently brewing those hops and raising the money for the K9 Association. I just want to give you guys a reference, because I've heard many times here at the meeting, and around in the public and in the media, that Elk Grove needs a hospital. And I agree, we do need a hospital, but we need a hospital that's planned appropriately, and that's gonna serve our community. Now, not that I want this to happen, but for example, if any one of you today needed emergency services, you would be directed by the ambulance to go to Kaiser South SAC or Methodist. Kaiser South SAC's 4.8 miles from here, Methodist is 4.4. In the event that Dignity built their hospital and relocated Methodist to the Elk Grove Boulevard and Big Horn site, we're now one mile away from the hospital. If you chose to go to CNU, and if you were in an emergency situation, you would be not choosing where you're going, the EMS would do that. That's 5.8 miles. I want to point out that City Hall is pretty close to being the center of Elk Grove. If you look at a map and look at it, majority of our population here in Elk Grove resides east and south, not so much to the west. And so, when looking at a site for a hospital that's gonna serve Elk Grove, I don't oppose a hospital, I just oppose a hospital in the wrong place. I recommend that we look at a place that can really serve our community. The I-5 corridor does not have a hospital currently, because there's not much on the I-5 corridor. On the 99 corridor is where most of the population lives, Wilton, Lodi, Galt. You look out at Slough House, all those people also need hospitals, and right now, they're traveling to South SAC. Some of them, it's easier for them to get to Folsom. So if we really want to do service to our community, let's look at a good place to put a hospital, a hospital... If you chose to go to CNU and if you were in an emergency situation, you would be not choosing where you're going. The EMS would do that. That's 5.8 miles. I want to point out that City Hall is pretty close to being the center of Elk Grove. If you look at a map and look at it, majority of our population here in Elk Grove resides east and south, not so much to the west. And so, when looking at a site for a hospital that's going to serve Elk Grove, I don't oppose a hospital, I just oppose a hospital in the wrong place. I recommend that we look at a place that can really serve our community. The I-5 corridor does not have a hospital currently, because there's not much on the I-5 corridor. On the 99 corridor is where most of the population lives, Wilton, Lodi, Galt. You look out at Slough House, all those people also need hospitals. And right now, they're traveling to South SAC. Some of them, it's easier for them to get to Folsom. So if we really want to do service to our community, let's look at a good place to put a hospital, a hospital that's really going to serve our community. The second point that I have, and I better be quick, is that I'd really like you to use your guys' influence as the city council and leaders that we've elected to represent our community, to request that businesses that are coming into Elk Grove act with transparency, give factual information, and act with integrity. We've seen many situations where that hasn't occurred. One example is the last city council meeting, where an employee of CNU came in as a concerned resident and is actually the Assistant Medical Director of Medical Education at the university. And Mr. Soon, you offered to give her information to contact her with CNU, and she didn't choose to correct you and let you know. That's not transparency. I'm here as a healthcare provider, I've told you guys that several times now, but I'm just asking for transparency, honesty, and integrity in any business that wants to come to Elk Grove. We need to demand that. And we need to demand that of ourselves and of our leaders. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker, Boyce Jeffries. Following Boyce is Jan Smutney Jones.
Good evening, Mayor and members of city council. If you recall, back in January, I was here discussing the PPZ ordinance. And since there was no response from the council or from city staff, all I'm, this evening, I'm requesting, hoping to get a letter from either the mayor, council, city clerk, staff, stating that you adhered and follow all policies and procedures regarding the PPZ. That's all I'm requesting. This is a letter from the city of Elk Grove stating that you adhered to the PPZ policy and procedures as stated in your ordinance, stating that a petition is a survey, so on. So, you don't have to answer me now, I think everybody has my email. You can just email me that letter. And it only has to be one sentence, just stating that the city of Elk Grove adhered to all policies and procedures to the PPZ ordinance. Just one sentence, that's all it takes, all right? But since city staff didn't do a study, a survey, like stated in the ordinance, I conducted my own study regarding traffic citations, moving, and also parking. I went from 117 to 1218, two-year period, okay? Just out of curiosity, there were nine, there's 36 residential units on that street. Only nine resident units, me including one, which will take me off the list, wanted, had a problem with student parking. That's 25%. 25%. You don't win anything with 25% that I'm aware of. You don't win a lot of baseball games, but so on and so forth. Then, when it was implemented back in August of 18, right before school started, we had to, you had to pass that in July, and I requested it to be pulled, but to no avail, you didn't pull it because you wanted to make sure it got started for this, this current school year. Well, from 816 to 822, nine citations were given to Elk Grove High School students. No grace period. I know the officers don't have to implement a grace period, but hell, they're kids. Give them the benefit of the doubt. But, you know, at times, I read these reports, and I read, I read the officer's report and everything, I don't think it's so much Elk Grove Police Department, there's a bias in the neighborhood against the students, which is not fair. Not fair. So, I'll be back again to carry this on. I'll go into more stats, my figures, right here, it's a public document. I'll sit down with the chief and discuss it with him, if so desired. But, again, if you could get that letter to me, I would greatly appreciate it. One sentence, as I stated early, okay? Thank you. Have a great evening.
Our next speaker is Jan Smutney Jones. Following Jan is Kathy Engel.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Jan Smutney Jones. I'm a 17-year resident of Elk Grove, Stone Lake community specifically. And I hate to say it, this is the first time I've ever spoken before this board, but I felt the need to do that today. And we've, I follow a bunch of really remarkable people that have contributed to this community. And that's why my wife and I live here and raised our children in the Stone Lake community, which is a family-oriented, quiet neighborhood, very diverse, and a great place next to a wildlife center. It is not an appropriate place, however, to place a trauma-two hospital in the middle of our neighborhood. I want to just start out by saying that we have not been contacted by the developer at all. The city has not been there to tell us what's going on. The only, the only people who's, we've had one meeting with our homeowners association, and that's it. So the outreach, the transparency has really lost to with the neighborhood. We're really very angry about this. My understanding of what our, what our community is about, our general plan is about, is that we basically stress quiet neighborhoods and basically not disrupting existing businesses. That's not what this proposal is. It is basically destroying businesses that are thriving, serving our community. You just heard from one of them. And basically, this is a significant problem. Give you some idea, this building is taller than the state Capitol by 40 feet. That's what it's going to be. It's 255 feet or something like that. The state Capitol's 201 feet. It's a huge building. We're going to have a canyon of four-story parking structures down West Terran, and we're going to have five-story dormitories looking into people's backyard. This is in a quiet neighborhood. This is totally inappropriate for the quiet enjoyment of our community. We are not against hospitals. I think you just heard a colleague of mine say that. There are more appropriate places to put a hospital. Just to put this in perspective, we're in the very far end of, of West Elk Grove. You can't go any farther and find a population. There's only ducks further to the west. You've got to go five, six miles north to get to South SAC. You have to go 15 or 20 miles to get to West Lodi. And east, you've already heard it, most of our people live east and south. An inappropriate place for a hospital. So the bottom line is, we would ask you not to rezone the Stone Lake Landing for this hospital. There's plenty of open land that we can put a hospital if we need one, but not in our quiet neighborhood. I would encourage you to come out west and join us for beer, sushi, good Indian food. We've got it all out there. But we really don't want to see you for ribbon-cutting. So thank you very much, and hopefully this will be, this drama will be short-lived, but we really, really will oppose this every step of the way. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Smutney Jones, Mr. Smutney Jones, you have a lot of information already, but if you are inclined, I am hosting an information session on February 22nd, and maybe Kara, can you give, okay. So if you wanted to ask, you mentioned earlier about not being, you know, the medical school had not reached out to you, there, there will be an opportunity for that very purpose, so people can ask questions to the city, to the hospital, separate things.
I can't tell you how important that is. The lack of transparency on this has really turned this community, you know, against this project. And the hostility is, and I'm not trying to direct that at the city now, but nobody knows what's, what in the world's going on. And this is a huge disruption for the quiet enjoyment of our property. So I do appreciate that, council member, and I don't know who I need to give information to, but we'll be happy to spread the word. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Engel. Following Kathy is Mark Graham.
Hi, Kathy. Mayor Lee and council members, I wrote down what I wanted to say, because I wanted to make sure that I stayed on track. So, the city council has repeatedly stated that they don't get involved in private business. And, and I thought that was the case. They said that they can't stop somebody from doing something on their own property. There were some zoning things, but other than that, they can't get involved. But in the last few weeks, I found that to be grossly inaccurate in the case of the California North State University-proposed hospital. The Elk Grove Department of Economic Development has actively pursued California North State University. And according to the city council Goals and Imperatives Document dated December 30th, 2018, staff, I quote, "Staff continues to support California North State University to assist them with campus planning and expansion activities," end quote. This doesn't seem to align with what we've been told by our city officials. This leads us to believe that either we are being misled, or that the city council is not aware of what the staff is doing. How can the city consider this hospital and continually use the phrase, "It's good for the entire city," when you don't know what type of health insurance this proposed hospital will accept? According to the recent article in the Sacramento Business Journal, I think it was last Friday, and this is a quote, "The Sacramento region's healthcare market is competitive. The area's three largest private sector employers are Kaiser, Sutter Health, and Dignity Health. Sutter, with 24 hospitals and 5,500 affiliated physicians throughout Northern California, is headquartered in Sacramento. California North State will have to differentiate itself in the market to survive. It will have to bring in substantial patient volumes, said health industry attorney Lawrence Garcia. California North State's best hope, he said, may be to serve patients whose healthcare is paid for by Medi-Cal, California's Medicaid program." The city is spending a great deal of money on marketing, branding, and incentives. Those are good things. But to encourage small businesses to consider Elk Grove. But there's even a special program for microbreweries. And we have a new one coming in on, I think Laguna. But do you think the way you're treating small businesses in the Stone Lake Landing area serves to further that goal? So, I know you can't respond, but that's just, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Mark Graham. Following Mark is Reese Hansen.
And Mr. Graham did submit a PowerPoint presentation, which I'll assist with pulling up, but he did submit that within 24 hours of the meeting, in accordance with our policy.
Okay, so long as it's within three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Mark Graham, and I live in Elk Grove. Over the weekend, I sent you an email which had titles of about 100 scientific studies on health impacts of electromagnetic fields, and that occur far, far below the FCC exposure limits. The Federal Communications Commission and the IEEE have chosen to ignore all those studies. Why do you think that is? They are just in denial, and the answer is, follow the money. Now, here's one search you can do on your phone before you leave tonight. Do your own web search on effect of mobile telephones on male fertility, or effect of cell phones on sperm cells. You will find dozens of studies. IEEE is committed to the advancement of technology. You have a very different mission, and so does the FCC, but they are shirking their responsibility. Bill Hammett is not an expert in the field, he is not neutral, and he is not unbiased. He was a very poor and every, and inappropriate choice for the staff to hire for the community workshop on November 28th. And as I have said, the city attorney told me on January 31st that AT&amp;T paid the city $3,000 that the city then used to hire Bill Hammett. That is a blatant conflict of interest, and the city has to correct it. Bill Hammett failed to tell you about all the scientific studies that the IEEE and FCC have chosen to ignore, because ignoring them suits the financial interests of the wireless carriers who control them. Bill Hammett's job was to make you feel good about doing the wrong thing. I, and he misled you. I'm asking you to do the right thing. I know that the council wants to do the right thing. You are all good people, and I have faith in you. But as you sit here today, if there is any doubt in your mind that long-term exposure to 4G and 5G cell antenna radiation causes, is a health hazard, and causes a long list of serious and progressive health impacts, then you have been duped. You have been deceived by industry representative Bill Hammett and by your staff who hired him. Bill Hammett is a slick industry spokesman who works for AT&amp;T and Verizon. I showed you that by email on November 10th. He told you less than half the story. He lied to you by omission. The lie was that he was giving you a complete and accurate picture of the scientific research, but it was neither. The council needs to make up for this. I'm recommending you have a new community workshop. And this is not too big an issue for you to have a second community workshop. This issue will affect our city forever. It will affect everybody, where we work, where we play, and where we live. And you can't afford to do this without accurate information. Now, as to this payment from AT&amp;T of $3,000, I asked the council members to ask the city attorney about that tonight, in the council meeting, so that it's clear you're not hiding anything. Even if AT&amp;T did not pay the city to hire Bill Hammett, the fact is, he gave a very industry-slanted presentation, and he told you less than half the story. The council never got what it directed the staff to do on September 26th, which is hire somebody neutral and unbiased and an expert in the field. It was a great idea and great direction to the staff, and the council and the city still did not get that. That idea is waiting to be acted on. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Reese Hansen.
Good evening, council members. I've spoken before, and I'm going to continue our conversation today regarding distancing the 5G cell antennas away from parks, homes, and schools. And I am quoting from a 2013 letter to the FCC by the American Academy of Pediatrics. "The American Academy of Pediatrics urges the FCC to adopt radiation standards that protect children's health and well-being. Children are not little adults and are disproportionately impacted by all environmental exposures, including cell radiation. Current FCC standards do not account for the unique vulnerability and use patterns specific to pregnant women and children. It is essential that any new standard for cell phones or other wireless devices be based on protecting the youngest and most vulnerable populations to ensure they are safeguarded throughout their lifetimes." So I am, again, standing before you to encourage with our documentation for cell antennas, the applications that are coming in, that cell antennas should be an appropriate minimum distance from homes, schools, and parks. And of course, Mark Graham has had many conversations as to what exactly that appropriate distance would be, and what some other communities have listed as appropriate figures. So I'll leave those to previous conversations. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Trina Priest. Following Trina is Jason Stelling.
Yes, I just wanted to share with the council my personal, excuse me, experiences with cell towers, a continuation of the previous people before me. I worked in a building that had telecommunications headquarters. I was very healthy when I went to work there. No doubt, this building has passed all FCC requirements, or it wouldn't be there. It was a state building. Shortly after, well, I would say several years after I was there, I came down with breast cancer. I was not the only lady to get breast cancer. There were quite a few. I would say the percentage was above normal of women in that building who got breast cancer. I have had cancer five times. It kept coming back. I have been free for the past five years. My oncologist is absolutely shocked at how well I've done. He said, "What have you been doing, and what changes have you made in your life?" And I said, "I haven't made any. I got out of the building I was working for." I am not an abnormality, but I am a rarity for someone to have the cancer metastasize as much as mine did, travel, and be treated with it five times, and then have it go away. And it never, after I left the building, it did not come back. And I have absolutely no doubt in my mind that it was related, the cancers coming in were related to my being in that building. Now, the FCC has done testing, but I have no doubt, and you would have to support me on that, that any testing they have done has been on healthy adults. They have not tested children. They have not tested it on elderly people. They did not test it on anybody with any kind of immune condition. That could be a flu, that could be a cold, it could be a heart condition. They didn't test those people. And our population is filled with those people, and none of them were tested. And I have absolutely no trust in the reports that they put out. And that's my personal experience in dealing with these cell towers. And I think the city allowed- My oncologist is absolutely shocked at how well I've done. He said, "What have you been doing, and what changes have you made in your life?" And I said, "I haven't made any. I got out of the building I was working for." I am not an abnormality, but I am a rarity for someone to have the cancer metastasize as much as mine did, travel, and be treated with it five times, and then have it go away. And it never... After I left the building, it did not come back, and I have absolutely no doubt in my mind that it was related... The cancers coming in were related to my being in that building. Now, the FCC has done testing, but I have no doubt, and you would have to support me on that, that any testing they have done has been on healthy adults. They have not tested children. They have not tested it on elderly people. They did not test it on anybody with any kind of immune condition. That could be a flu. That could be a cold. It could be a heart condition. They didn't test those people. And our population is filled with those people, and none of them were tested. And I have absolutely no trust in the reports that they put out. And that's my personal experience in dealing with these cell towers. And I think the city allowing them to put them on our streetlights in front of our houses is very, very irresponsible. Thank you.
Thank you. Final speaker is Jason Stelling.
Well, everybody, I'd just like to... Never done this before in the city council, and I'd just like to thank you and for your service. And I'm against the CNU Hospital emphatically. Wrong location, wrong location, wrong location. And what's going to happen in like four or five years when the lease at All Data, the data center owned by AutoZone, is up for Phase II of the hospital? How much is it going to cost Elk Grove to give incentives to that corporation to stay in Elk Grove? Really? There's like 430 people working there right now. They're doing fine there. They would stay there if the hospital went, kicked them out in four or five years for Phase II of their project. It's a vanity project by the owners of CNU. They could have it somewhere else. And I think for transparency's sake, whenever the city council promotes this hospital there, they should acknowledge the fact that they accepted thousands of dollars for their campaigns. Steve Lee accepted probably at least $20,000 for your mayoral campaign.
It's Steve Lee.
Steve Lee, sorry.
It's Steve Lee.
Mr. Lee, I apologize.
Thank you.
Just reading it as I see it. And I'll just stand here for a minute because I can't really think of anything else to say. And yeah, be transparent about where you get your money from. And I wish back in the summer, you could have gave the neighbors a chance to raise some money to contribute to you guys. Because you guys knew about this. We didn't. Thank you.
Right. Final speaker is Connie Connolly.
I wasn't going to speak, but listening to all the people from Stone Lakes and the businesses around there, all I can say is, it's deja vu all over again. Take you back to 2005, and the only person that's going to know what I'm talking about is Pat Hume. I want to talk about a Walmart Supercenter that was going to go in at Sheldon and Power and Rhodes. It was a fight that we were told we couldn't win. You two housewives, Linda Ford, Connie Connolly, go home. You can't win this. You can't come up against the Walmart lawyers who were sitting right there in suits that were more than a month's of my salary, but we didn't give up. We fought, and we fought. And we had a EIR scoping meeting, as you recall, Pat, that was right before Christmas, thinking, nobody will show up. It's Christmas time. We'll get in, we'll get out, we'll get our EIR, we'll be on our way. But little did they know that we packed these chambers, and we could put on a EIR scoping at the meeting before the Planning Commission, and we brought up people one after one after one, and we addressed every single one of the elements. And Pat, do you remember what you did? Do you remember that you held up the binder and you said, "In all my years on the Planning Commission, this is the best presentation I've ever seen from the community." So it can be done. And two days after that EIR scoping meeting, Walmart pulled their permit, and we won. And all we said during that time is Elk Grove Coalition advocating proper planning. We need to put these big developments in the right place that serve the entire community. I don't have a dog in this fight, but I just want the people to know that they need to be heard and they need transparency. When I... The brewery, I heard from that... I never met them until tonight. They said they haven't heard from anyone. And when I saw their picture in The Citizen, when they got Rookie Business of the Year with the chamber, with the two Steves surrounding the couple, smiling broadly, we need to be... I mean, I cannot believe that couple put all that money into our community, and we want to take their business away. I've never been there, met them tonight for the very first time, but something's not right here. And you have it within your power to make sure that this hospital, if it does come to Elk Grove, goes in the right place. And there's a place at Grant Line and 99 that needs a little... Needs a home. So, you know, it's got that interchange, you know? Life would be great if we just moved it over there. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you, folks. Let's move to the next item.
Take us to Section 6, General Administration Information.
Good evening, Mayor Lee and Council. Brian Noblet here. I'm filling in for Mr. Bearman tonight. He's out of town attending training, so I'll be delivering the general administrative report this evening. The first item I'd like to talk about is to let everybody know that last night, we had an estimated 700 canned and boxed food items that were dropped off at the Love Your Community Food Drive event. The Youth Commission organized this, which was a Valentine-themed event to benefit those served by the Elk Grove Food Bank. In addition to donations, participants and the Commission made Valentine cards to be passed out with the food distributed this week. Mr. Bearman would also like to extend his thanks to the city council and staff who participated in last week's strategic planning retreat. These sessions are an important opportunity to review the city's goals and establish priorities and direction for the next two years. A video of the presentations and discussion will be available on the city's website next week. The final mission, vision, and goals will return to the city council at a future council meeting for adoption. As was mentioned previously, a council member soon will be hosting an information session regarding California North State University's proposed hospital project and university expansion next Friday, February 22nd, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. at the Sacramento Asian Sports Foundation, which is located at 9040 High Tech Court. Representatives from CNU and city staff will offer information about the project and the review process at this meeting. Details about the project are available on the city's website. Also, we'd like to let everyone know, the online application period for fiscal year 2019-2020 Community Development Block Grant, Community Service Grant, and Event Sponsorship Grant funding for nonprofit organizations is now open. The CDBG and CSG applications are due on February 22nd. Event sponsorship grants are due on March 1st. Guidelines, instructions, and applications are available on the city's website. Also, in accordance with city holidays, I want to let everyone know, City Hall will be closed on Monday, February 18th, in observance of President's Day. City Hall will reopen on Tuesday, February 19th for regular business. Brief update on standing citywide initiatives relative to the Civic Center site and specific to the Aquatic Center in the Commons. Contractor is scheduling pool plastering for the near future and its contingent on weather. Concrete work in the Commons is underway with the fountain pad and surrounding areas being poured last week. Staff is currently working with CSD on transition and operations plans for the facility. With respect to the Community Center, staff is working with the Senior Center of Elk Grove to finalize their lease and create a transition plan into the building for later this year. As for Civic Center Public Art, the Music Sculpture Review Panel selected three finalists for the project who will be presented to the Arts Commission for their approval. And the Trails in Nature Area as part of the Civic Center Master Plan, there were eight proposals received for the design and engineering services for the Trails in Nature Area RFP. Staff is currently evaluating the proposals and hope to have a contractor selected by the end of the month. Brief item relative to the Southeast Policy Area, the Development Impact Fee Programs for SEPA are on tonight's agenda for your consideration. Lastly, the Animal Shelter Art Proposals will be evaluated by the Review Panel on March 11th. And that concludes tonight's report. I'm available for any questions, and this will all be posted on the city's website.
Are there any questions? If there are no questions, thank you, sir. All right, next item.
Take us to Section 7, Council Comments, Reports, and Future Agenda Items.
All right, Councilmember Nguyen.
Thank you, sir. I'll be really brief since I know we have to go into closed session right after this. I had the Paratransit Board Meeting, and then had the opportunity to attend our very first Lunar New Year celebration, which was very well-attended. It was such a rainy, stormy, windy night, and there was over 750 chairs set up at the Asian Sports Foundation. Every single chair was taken, and it was a standing room only, so it was a wonderful, great event to have. Also, had the opportunity to emcee our very first arts inaugural art reception at their new location with our Vice Mayor, Pat Hume, which was also very well-attended. The artist that was recognized was Sharon Gerber, which many of you may know as somebody who is an up-and-coming artist and started out in Sacramento, working with Mayor Kevin Johnson at the time, and found this love for art, and she was able to sell a couple of pieces that night as well, too. And I'll end it there.
Excellent. Councilmember Sun.
Thank you. I'll be brief also. Opportunity to tour with some of our city staff, the Elk Grove Winter Sanctuary Program. For those who don't know about it, it's about 20 individuals who are homeless that are accommodated through volunteers, and a lot of volunteers feeding them and housing them in churches who open up their rooms so that they can sleep, and they rotate around the city. It's a great program. You wouldn't believe it. 20 individuals, but you have approximately a pool of 1,500 people that are volunteering, and it's an incredible example, again, of our community coming together. So hopefully, that program can expand in the future. Attended our Library Authority Budget Audit Committee meeting, and as well as we had our first SECOG Policy and Innovation Committee meeting, which I'm honored to be the chair of. We're trying to address... One of the major things is the Metropolitan Transportation Plan and Sustainable Community Strategy requirement of a 19% greenhouse gas reduction. There's a lot of complexity to all that, so I'll end it there. But suffice to say, it's a big deal for our region in terms of transportation funding and how we move forward as a city. Tomorrow, we have the Sacramento Transportation Authority meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I'll be brief as well. I attended the Paratransit Board Meeting. The Councilmember Nguyen mentioned nothing to report, but we did have to vote to continue or to reduce the hours of non-ADA service, which is something that the Paratransit does kind of out of the kindness of our heart, but we were running buses at 11:00, 11:30 at night, which was requiring having to have an alternate driver on staff, having to have two dispatchers on staff, and the expenses, it just burdens the system. And so, you know, the American with Disabilities Act requires that you provide equal service to those with disabilities, and so if there's not a fixed route transit bus running, then you don't have to provide that other service. It was a difficult decision, but one that I feel had to be made. I did attend the Lunar New Year's Festival. As Councilmember Nguyen mentioned, it was an amazing turnout. They kept bringing out more chairs and more chairs and more chairs until finally they had no room for more chairs. I came by and participated in the food drive that the Youth Commission put on, and I want to say a special shout-out to Assemblymember Cooper's office, who coordinated via Grocery Outlet, a donation of a significant amount of food. So it's very nice to see that happen. Had the Sanitation Board District this morning. It took about an hour to get to downtown Sacramento on those rainy freeway roads for a meeting that lasted about 12 minutes. So not much to report there, and have SDA tomorrow, as was mentioned by Councilmember Nguyen.
All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor. In the interest of time, the only thing I wanted to highlight is that we all attended was the retreat that we have once every two years. Please stand by for a report that's going to come back for approval by the council. And so with that in mind, let's move to the next item.
Take us to Section 8, the Consent Calendar Items.
Right. I see that Eileen Conwell signed up to speak on 8.10. Shall we move the consent and hold that, or what is the wish of the council?
Maybe take the public comment, and then we'll take the motion.
All right, let's see that.
Hi, good evening. I'm Eileen Conwell. I'm a member of Gresha Shirley Peters. The president was not able to be here tonight, so she asked me to stand in. We want to thank you on 8.10. That's Alternative C. It makes some improvements to the Sheldon Road between Elk Grove Florin and Waterman, and the staff did a wonderful presentation. A public... We got to attend, and they put together all these alternatives, and it was lots of input, and it was very nice, and we appreciate it very much, and thank you. And we're good with that. It's nice to hear, huh?
Thank you for the comments. A long time coming, desperately needed.
Desperately needed, yep. I don't live off Sheldon Road myself. I live off Bradshaw. That's a whole different subject for a different day, but I travel, of course, a lot on Sheldon Road, and it's desperately needed. I'll tell you that. There was a lot of turnout at the meeting. It was good. Thank you very much.
I'll move Consent Calendar.
Second.
Okay, since there's no additional public speaker, let's close it, and we have a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close contention? All right, next item.
Take us to Section 9, our public hearing, starting with item 9.1, which is a public hearing to consider determination of public convenience or necessity for beer, wine, and distilled spirits sales for Circle K Fuel Center at Sheldon Place Center.
Sarah Kirchgessner, planning. The item for you tonight is a request for a determination of public convenience or necessity for the Circle K Fuel Center for a Type 21 license from ABC. The Type 21 license would allow for the sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits for off-site consumption. The city council approved a PCN for a Type 20 at the site last year. The applicant has indicated that a Type 21 license will put them in a better position to compete with other convenience stores in the vicinity. At this time, no license has been issued. They have the letter, and they would request the license from ABC once the building was constructed. The Circle K Fuel Center is located within an approved shopping center on the corner of Sheldon Road and East Stockton Boulevard. It was approved by the Planning Commission in 2018. As I said, the shopping center has not been constructed. ABC considers the census tract over-concentrated. There are currently five active licenses in the census tract. The other locations are located over a mile away along Bond Road, and no schools or parks are located within 1,000 feet of the project site. The police department does not have a public safety-related objection to the issuance of the license. They indicated that would most likely result in a redistribution of sales, and the police department will include a condition restricting single-unit sales on the ABC license. The project is exempt from SEQA, and staff recommends approval of the determination. I'm available for questions.
Any questions? Vice Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. With respect to the single-unit sales, is that only for beer? Does that apply for spirits as well? Is it a volume requirement? What is being restricted there or proposed to be restricted?
I believe it's on volume, but the police could indicate.
I believe it's on volume as well. That's my understanding.
And so is that only beers above a certain size? Is that what you would say, or does it...
Yes.
Okay, then do we have anything addressing the size of the spirits?
To be honest, I don't have this... Do you have the staff reports there? I don't have it.
I do. There isn't anything conditioned on this determination. Any condition would be added on the actual ABC license by the police department at that time.
Right. So are you saying I've got to approve the license in order for the police to impose conditions, or I need to establish the conditions that I wish to see imposed?
Typically, we do not condition the determination of public convenience or necessity, but you can direct the police department, I believe, to add that condition on the license.
Well, so I'm in a bit of a quandary then, because I'm not comfortable approving the allowance of the sales of the spirits without knowing that I have some assurance that we're going to restrict individual sales of, you know, for lack of a better term, airplane-sized bottles. I think you have no business selling that size of alcohol at an automotive facility. If they want to pick up, you know, a pint or a liter or whatever of booze because that's where they're stopping on their way home, that's one thing, but I don't think anybody needs the convenience of that size alcohol at a gas station.
I don't disagree, Vice Mayor, and I think that's consistent with how we've handled other PCNs at other similar establishments.
So can we have those two conditions, that it has to be above a certain size for beer and above a certain size for spirits?
I'm quite certain that we can do that.
Okay. Question?
Councilman?
Vice Mayor, just a question. So if you... I mean, isn't an ounce of alcohol the same as a 12 ounces of beer? So would that size be similar to... Similar size of beer? I mean, not similar size, but a, you know, 12-ounce can of beer?
Right, but if you're silent on the issue, it doesn't address the size of the spirits. So in other words, I would imagine the beer would probably be... I don't know. I mean, I don't want to get too much in the weeds here, but I would imagine it's a 24-ounce or a 40-ounce beer, which is more than a single beer. You couldn't buy a single beer. And so I'm saying they shouldn't be able to buy a single shot of booze.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Okay. Right? No other questions? Thank you. Okay, wanted to declare a public hearing open. Would like to invite the applicant. Would like to invite the applicant, Pete Tobin, to come on down.
Funny, you look more like an Eric than a Pete to me.
I'm not Pete. I'm, Mayor Lee, members of the council, I'm Eric Rasmus. I'm here representing Thule Oil Company, who will be the owner and operator of this particular store in question. Thule Oil Company is a region, local, family-owned business, hands-on. They've got 11 stores, I think, in the area, including one existing one already in City of Out Grove. Stellar record, again, they're very hands-on. David Thule, one of the principals, is here and he could answer any questions that you might have. So I'm really here to answer any questions. We obviously would urge you to adopt staff's recommendation. And as far as the conditions on the airplane-sized bottles of spirits, we would agree with that condition. It's not something that typically is sold in any of the Thule stores. So we'd be fine and I'm really comfortable that we could work with the police department and city staff to hammer out specifics on those conditions. I think they're consistent with what you're thinking. So with that, I appreciate the time and would answer any question that you might have.
Okay, any questions?
No questions, but Thule's a good operator. I feel more comfortable knowing that they're involved.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. This time, I want to open for public comment, seeing that no members of the public signed up to speak. Want to close the public comment. Mr. Applicant, would you like to come back and rebut yourself? I figure no. So let's declare the public hearing closed and Councilor Blair Shenan direction.
Move to adopt the resolution.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, abstention? All right, next item.
Let's take us on to Item 9.2, a public hearing to consider an ordinance amending Out Grove Municipal Code, Chapter 16.95, for development impact fees and resolutions adopting the southeast area and various recovery fees within the southeast policy area.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Christopher Jordan, before you this evening, as Jason mentioned, are the fee programs for the southeast policy area. We'll be going over tonight the three that we're requesting for adoption, the cost recovery fee, the drainage impact fee, which also applies to a portion of the Laguna Ridge specific plan area, as well as the parks and trails fee. Just a quick, brief history, back in July of 2014, you approved the southeast policy area plan, and in spring of 2015, we were working on the fee programs. And in June of that year, we brought you, actually, May and June, brought you item for direction on some specific policy questions regarding those programs received direction. Since then, we've been working on refining the design of the Shed Sea Corridor and some of the basin components. We've also now received, as of about a week or two ago, the environmental permits, the 404, 401, 1602 environmental permits for the Shed Sea Corridor itself and the basin outfalls. We also have a number of land plan amendments that you've considered and given approval to, Bruceville Meadows, Poppy Key Southwest, and Mendez. So now with all those pieces in place, bringing forward the fee programs is appropriate. The fee programs you're going to hear about this evening fall under the Mitigation Fee Act, AB 1600 or Government Code, Section 66,000. What this section of the government code allows us to do is impose fees as a condition of new development. That to have a reasonable relationship to the purpose of the fee and the impact of being caused. So essentially, when you have new development occurring, there may be infrastructure or other cost components that need to be covered by those projects and how you allocate those costs between projects has to have a reasonable relationship and nexus. Going to the cost recovery fee, this ultimately covers all of the development costs for preparing the SEPA plan and some initial implementation activities that staff has been involved in. Total cost for the program is $2,000,000, about $2,060,000. And so the funding has come from a variety of special project and general fund sources, including an interfund loan. So with that being the case, the fee program will repay for those sources of funds that were used. It also includes an annual adjustment based on the local agency investment funder LAF rate plus 2 percent, which is essentially our internal borrowing cost. It also, as with the other fees you'll see later this evening, includes an administrative component of 4 percent. This is what city staff has identified as the cost for administering the fee programs and the various fund lines and the regular updates to the fee programs as made necessary. So for the cost fee program, we assess this on the gross acre of developed land. What that means is that we charge this for residential and non-residential uses. We do not charge this for parks, trails, detention basins, schools, excuse me, and school sites. So essentially, it's just those uses that are furthering the development of the area. That ends up coming out to about $2,143 and change, which again, covers on those acreage basis. Moving to the drainage impact fee, as we've talked about previously, this is a replacement to the Sacramento County Zone 11A program. That program only provides partial funding for improvements, does not provide for complete funding of drainage improvements in the area. Deannexation proceedings are underway with the county. They're anticipating bringing it forward to the board for approval or starting that process with the approval in the April timeframe. Once we have more information on the date, we'll certainly share it with stakeholders. This fee, again, will ultimately replace the 11A program and in doing so, provides full cost recovery for the improvements as they've been identified. What that ultimately means then is construction of the channel, the basins, with the land and the improvement cost piece, as well as trunk drainage within the improved area and as well as the permitting and mitigation cost for those improvements. And again, as I mentioned, this covers not just the southeast policy area, but the Laguna Ridge Phase 3 area. So to talk about what that locationally means, this may have to give you a little bit of orientation. The red outline is the southeast policy area. The green area here is the Laguna Ridge Phase 3 component. Over here is Bruceville. You see Camera at the south end and 99 is over here on the far right. So the way we set this up is based upon the various infrastructure pieces within their respective plan areas. Those plan areas have their applicable fees. There ends up being two fee zones for drainage. So the southeast fee will end up covering the channel improvements, each of the basins you see, as well as the trunk drainage within those development areas. And then for Laguna Ridge Phase 3, it covers the trunk drainage within the green area. It covers the basin that's shown here in the pink color, as well as the outfall channel that comes down to the main shed sea channel. There's no direct improvement benefit for Laguna Ridge to the main channel improvements, so there's no cost attributable there. Their cost ends at the end of the outfall component. And likewise, nothing from southeast takes benefit out of Laguna Ridge, so there's no cost share there as well. You can see here, based upon where those basins are, we divide the area up into a series of subsheds. For purposes of southeast, they're labeled with an S and for Laguna Ridge, they're LRSP, although in the case of Laguna Ridge, these are married together into one area for purposes of the fee. The A1 and A2 areas are the Lent Ranch and Sterling Meadows area. Those have been participating in 11A programs, so deannexation and replacement of the fee structure there is not proposed. For Zone 1, southeast policy area, there are five components here. The first is the channel fee. This covers the construction of the channel itself, as well as land components for acquisition of the channel alignment. Then you have the basin fee, which covers the applicable land and improvements for the basins themselves, as well as the trunk drainage facilities within that subshed. There's a city infrastructure fee. This is essentially the cost that the city has expended to date, either with property acquisition, designing permitting costs, or other efforts the city has undertaken to advance infrastructure related to drainage. This cost will be applicable to everybody. Everyone will pay into this. We've counted it as a separate line item so that there's easier accounting in terms of that. So the basin and channel fee are areas where development can receive credit and reimbursement based upon the improvements they complete. The Beach Stone Lakes fee is an existing component that the 11A fee captures. This goes towards improvements in the Beach Stone Lakes area. Because of the deannexation, staff's recommending that the Beach Stone Lakes fee be carried forward into this new fee program. Those monies will be remitted to the county into their 11A program or otherwise for further those improvements. And those will go through the same regular update that the 11A program uses, whereas the rest of these will be indexed based upon the NEXA study in your packet. And then finally, we have the administration fee, which is again, the 4 percent of the overall total. For the Laguna Ridge area, this is three fees. The drainage fee, again, is the basin, the trunk facilities, and the outfall channel. You have the same Beach Stone Lakes fee and the same administration fee. Just real quickly, those improvement costs, again, they cover infrastructure and land. The estimates are based upon the design work done by the city's consultant, West Yost, over the last several years. We do include land values, as I mentioned. Generally, we use $150,000 per acre for those facilities, except where areas that are within the existing, city-mapped 100-year floodplain area, there we use $100,000 per acre. For channel land, this includes the channel itself, as well as the north side maintenance area, which will ultimately have further improvements for trail facilities. So that land is covered there. As you'll see in a minute with the trail program, that land component is not included in the trail piece. The south side channel, south side trail along the channel is included solely in the trails fee program. For the Shed S7 area, this is the Bruceville Meadows project. It is solely encompassing that project and that project is solely sited within the S7 area. So all of their basin and trunk facilities are equal to what's calculated in the fee program. In talking with the project proponents, as they're moving forward in construction later this year, they're requesting that we don't establish the basin fee for that particular shed area. Essentially, it allows them to move forward without going through the process of calculating credits and reimbursement and paying a fee upfront and then just getting reimbursed essentially from themselves. And then it allows us to avoid all of the paperwork hassle that goes with it. So essentially, they'll construct it at their own cost. We won't have to go back and look at any binder reviews. And ultimately, the city takes possession or acquisition of those facilities once completed to the city's satisfaction. So with that, we'd be setting for that basin area alone, a zero for the basin fee. They'd still pay the channel and all the other fee components. So here are the proposed drainage fees as outlined in the resolution attached to your packet. I won't go through this in too much detail, just to highlight what is in here. Again, you'll see in Basin 7 area, you'll see the reduction that occurs for the single-family and multifamily. Those are the only land uses that exist there. Anywhere that's shown with NA in the table, those are areas where that land use type is not present within the basin area. So there's no applicable fee for those land use types. For the implementation, fee credits or reimbursement are provided for the eligible facilities and they're based upon the lesser value to construct or the program value as documented in the NEXA study. Moving to the parks and trails fee, this is one NEXA study, one program, but it covers two separate facilities, the parks and trails within southeast exclusively. For parks, we don't include land acquisition. That is covered through the city's Quimby Regulations in Title 22 of the Municipal Code. If you have properties that are over-dedicating, they're issued credits or actually issued cash ultimately for the over-dedication. If you're under-dedicating, there's an appraisal process to determine what your in-lu fee payment is, and that occurs pursuant to the ordinance. So the fee program focuses then on the improvements, the cost to construct those facilities. They're divided out by the facility type because we have different costs based on the facilities, and those are based upon staff's experience and CSD's experience in delivering the similar types of facilities in the Laguna Ridge area. This fee program recognizes the proportional share between residential uses and employment uses. There's a reasonable nexus for employment areas paying a portion of the park improvement based on their proximity to the park facilities. Just real quickly, these are the park facilities that are included. What's not shown on the map, but also included in the fee program, are the nine acres of the Reardon Park sites, which do count towards the overall parkland obligation for southeast. Otherwise, this plan recognizes the current status of the land plan and the previous plan amendments that you've approved. So then here are the parks fees, just laid out again real quickly. For residential, these are calculated on a per-unit basis, and for non-residential, we calculate this on a per-acre basis. So essentially, as projects come through, we look at the total area being improved by the project and calculate the acreage that way, rather than looking at the square footage of the building. On the trails fee, this includes trails, facilities, and land. Again, on the land side, we don't count the north side of the drainage channel because that's covered from the drainage facilities. We use a universal value of $150,000 per acre as part of that calculation. We do also include grade-separated components or the differential between what would be the roadway fee cost and what the separation would be for the trails along Shed Sea at Big Horn and Bilby. Since you last saw this in 2015, we've continued to refine the design and reduce the cost estimates for those facilities. We do have a share of cost between the residential employment uses on this fee as well. Here you can see the segments of the trails that are included in the plan. Each of these are itemized out by segment and by trail type, so the estimations include characteristics of those facilities, dimensional components, and they're all based upon the designs which are in the Landscape Planning Prototype Manual, which is essentially the landscape design requirements for southeast. So here are the proposed trail fees. Again, as with the parks, the residential is calculated on a per-unit basis and the non-residential on a per-acre basis. So for implementation here, these are collected at building permit. Credits, again, are available for improvement and land dedication, and parkland is calculated as an in-lu or appropriate based upon the city's regulations. Turning very briefly to the question of economic development, staff has been looking at this in terms of competitiveness for the fees. We're actually going to be conducting citywide analysis of competitiveness of all fees that we have in comparison to other areas of the region. That study will be wrapping up here in the next few weeks, hopefully. Once we have more information about that, we're going to come forward likely with a full recommendation of incentive packages that could be applicable to southeast and what that process would look like. So we're not recommending any reductions in the fee values at this time. In terms of environmental review, all the improvements that are in these fee programs are consistent with what was outlined in the Laguna Ridge specific plan and the southeast policy area strategic plan, so no further environmental review is required. Lastly, on the fiscal side, again, the fees are based upon the current approved land plan. Any future amendments to the land plan may require amendments to the program, so we'll certainly keep an eye out for that as any projects move forward. We do want to highlight that there may be differences between what we assume in terms of the common land use types that would occur and what ultimately may be calculated in terms of revenue in the program. The example we use in the staff report is you have high-density designated sites, which we program in the fee, assuming that those would be multifamily uses. You could certainly have, say, a residential care facility or something like that that may generate lower fee revenue. Consistent with zoning for that sort of use to be in that zone, but that would then decrease the overall revenue to the project, to the fee programs. It'd be appropriate to have a reduction based upon the level of impact that those uses would occur, so there wouldn't be an issue in terms of the nexus itself. So those would be things to look at as the programs get implemented. So finally, staff's recommendation this evening, introduce the ordinance before you, which would amend Chapter 16.95 relative to development impact fees to recognize these new fees. It also includes revisions to additional chapter and section so that these fees would be available for fee deferral program, the city's fee deferral program. And then lastly, adopting the resolutions that are included in your packet for establishing the three fee programs. concludes my presentation. I hope you can answer questions.
Any questions? Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, not a question, but I just want to make a comment. Christopher, I want to commend you and the staff and the development community for coming together, put this fee program together. There's a lot that goes into it. I don't think the general public understands how much. I mean, just determining the adequate infrastructure, sizing all that, how to divvy up the payment, phasing, all those kinds of things, the reimbursements you talked about, there's just a lot that goes into it. So I appreciate, commend all the efforts that were made to put this together. We started looking at this, as you mentioned, in 2015, so this is how long it's taken for it to get to this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? Vice Mayor? No? No questions? Thank you. Great, thank you. Okay, well, I want to declare the public hearing open, open for public comment. I have one speaker sign up to speak, Jim Gilliam. Jim?
No.
No? You're good? You're waiving it? All right. So I want to close public comment, declare public hearing closed. Councilor Blair Shenan, direction.
I'll move to Motion 1, introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of the only of an ordinance amending Out Grove Municipal Code, Chapter 16.95, development impact fees.
Got a motion second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, close, abstention? All right, next motion.
Before we move on, Mayor, I'd just like to say, I didn't get a chance to add them all up as Christopher's going through those slides, but $2,000 an acre admin fee, $40,000 an acre drainage fee, $10,000 a door parks fee, $9,000 a door trails fee, these are all soft fees, totally unrelated to the building of the houses. So when we bemoan the lack of affordable housing, this contributes to that dilemma. It's a necessary evil, but when you cannot make up the cost of those fees and the price of the house.
Somebody's paying for those amenities. Good point, yep.
Right. Right.
Motion two?
Motion two? Got a second?
Second.
Okay, got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention? Next motion.
Motion three?
Got a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention? Next motion.
And motion four?
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention? All right, next item.
That'll take us on to item 9.3, which for public hearings to consider general plan, update climate action plan, transportation analysis guidelines, and park design principles.
I'll move to the, continue the item to the February 27th meeting.
Second.
Okay, you got a motion second to continue. All right, next item.
That will take us on.
Did we?
We do have one member that did sign up under 9.3, so.
Okay, Bill, is he here? Maybe he left already. Bill Rolsh? You still here? Is he outside?
Mr. Rolsh?
Mr. Rolsh, coming up, please.
Did you want to speak on this item?
I guess not. I guess not. I'll hold my comments until next week.
Okay.
Unless you want to give me a head start.
That's fine, yeah. We'll see you at the next meeting then. All right. Okay, next item.
That will take us on to Section 10, our regular agenda action items and recommendations, starting with item 10.1, which says receive the fiscal year 2018-19 mid-year budget review and consider resolution amending the fiscal year 2018 budget and capital improvement program.
Greens Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Hume, fellow city council members, my name is Shane Ryan, Budget Manager for the city, and our budget staff here today to discuss with you a mid-year budget review and also review performance measures at mid-year. So quick overview of the agenda, progress reports on the General Fund and Development Services Funds, and also budget amendments related to those two funds, then a brief discussion on position control, and then Public Works budget amendments, and ending with the performance measures report. So we'll start with general fund revenue. Admin year general fund revenues are trending closely to budget. We're projecting 104,000 surplus in revenues at year end, so that's about a tenth of a percent. Hence, staff does not recommend modifications to revenue budgets at this time. Looking at general fund expenditures, the city has expended approximately 53% of general fund budget at mid-year. Current trends in activities suggest a projected savings of over $2.5 million at year end. Hence, staff recommends programming $900,000 of this savings realized year-to-date in benefits toward an accelerated prepayment to our PERS unfunded liability. The $900,000 prepayment is in addition to the $900,000 that was adopted in the current year budget and has already been paid. As the city continues to accelerate its prepayments toward unfunded liability, the growth of required future year payments will be constrained, and hence, the city will benefit from reduced interest expenditures. So this table here before you, of the general fund, has been revised since the agenda was published last Friday, so please refer to Table 3 of the green sheet submitted for Agenda Item 10.1 to view the updated version of this table and comments that go with that. So the proposed revised budget column you see before you incorporates the staff recommendation mentioned in the prior slide and all other council authorized amendments year-to-date. And the current projection column incorporates the additional PERS payment as well. And then that last column, the projected year-end difference, shows that when you incorporate the additional $900,000 payment to PERS, the projected year-end savings for general fund goes down to over $1.6 million from the $2.5 million that I mentioned in the prior slide. Moving on to Development Services Fund, currently revenues and expenditure are trending close to budget. However, staff is recommending an amendment to increase budget revenues at about the amount of $375,000 specifically in the Planning Division to provide additional California Environmental Quality Act project processing and administrative services. The increased planning revenue is reflective of increased contractual billable work that also results in increased planning expenditures as well. Staff estimates working on 90 projects this year compared to 60 last year, and the cost of starting work on the environmental impact reports for current proposed projects is also included in this expenditure increase. So staff recommends increasing budget expenditures in the Planning Division by $295,000 to incorporate all of these additional costs. A brief discussion on position control changes. So for the Deputy City Attorney I and Deputy City Attorney II positions, staff recommends changing the titles to Deputy City Attorney and Senior Deputy City Attorney respectively, and this is a title change only, so no fiscal impact. The Position of Housing and Public Service Program Manager has taken on additional duties this fiscal year than in the past, including supervising an administrative analyst position, so staff recommends amending the salary scale of the position accordingly. And then the current Code Enforcement Supervisor position has taken on additional duties as well this fiscal year, which were previously being performed by the Assistant Development Services Director. Hence, staff recommends to reclassify that position to Code Enforcement Manager and also amend its salary schedule accordingly. This table before you encompasses the projected current year costs of these position control changes and projected annual costs moving forward. Now to speak on budget amendments in the Public Works Department, I'd like to invite Management and Budget Analyst II, Maria Phillips, up to the podium.
Good evening, sorry, good evening, Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Hume, and the council members. My name is Maria Phillips, and I am a Budget and Management and Budget Analyst II with the City of Elk Grove. Public Works is requesting an increase in funding in roughly $220,000 due to the following: unforeseen costs with the Civic Center, a payment for maintenance services with the county, higher cost per grant application with the Sacramento Area Council, and Public Works will also have doubled the amount of grant applications from the prior year. For the capital improvement program, there are revisions to seven existing projects, two new projects, and three projects that are being closed. Some of the highlighted projects are Old Town Plaza, which is requesting additional funds for design, which will ensure utilities such as drainage, sewer, water, as well as other improvements, the citywide curb ramps due to additional funds that are available, and the multimodal station study, which has been completed and thus the project is closing, resulting in $442,000 that will go back to city funds. If there's no questions, next I'd like to welcome our Senior Management and Budget Analyst, Nathan, to talk about performance measures.
Good evening, Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Hume, members of the council. As Maria mentioned, Nathan Bagwell, I have the privilege of serving as your senior analyst in the Finance Department. We're going to just take a brief look at the mid-year check-in for the performance measures. The 18-19 fiscal year performance measures were adopted in conjunction with this year's annual budget. Overall, the results at mid-year are, of the 71 quarterly citywide measures, 73% are in the green, which means they are meeting or exceeding their target. 4% are in yellow, which means they are within 10% of their target, and 23% are in red, which is outside of 10% of their target and what we deem as needing improvement. This is a summary that's taken from the staff report that actually breaks down the measures by council goal and does it by count. So as we can see here, there's 52 of the overall measures that are in the green, three in the yellow, and 16 in the red. And then lastly, here's a summary looking at it from a slightly different angle where we're taking the percentage of the measures by council goal. Overall, again, just to reiterate, we're 73% in the green, four in the yellow, and 23% in the red. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about the performance measurement program.
No questions.
Thank you for your time. I would like to go ahead and introduce Shay back up to the podium at this time.
At this time, staff would like to, a bit back up to council, to consider our recommendation to adopt a resolution amending the fiscal year 2018-19 budget and fiscal year 2018 through '23 capital improvement program as requested.
Any questions? No questions? Perfectly clear. Thank you, sir. At this point, I want to open for public comment, seeing that no members of the public sign up to speak. Want to close public comment. Counsel deliberation and direction.
I'll move to staff's recommendation.
Got a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention? Next item.
Take us to item 10.2, which is consider approval of a letter of interest to join the Safety and Fairness for Everyone, or otherwise known as SAFE Network, as a collaborative member with other Sacramento-area jurisdictions.
I would note that I believe Councilmember Nguyen has declared a conflict on this. I recommend that she excuse herself from council chambers while this is being considered.
Can I ask a procedural question before we hear this item then? Given that her refusal and Councilmember Detrick being absent, being sick, I intend to abstain on this item. Can it happen with a majority of those members voting, or does it have to be a majority of the body?
So, it's an interesting question. Since we do not have a resolution, it can be, if you have a quorum, which you do have, then a majority of the quorum can pass it. However, if you abstain, you wouldn't be counted towards that quorum. You'd only have two members, and so it would take a third council member if you're going to abstain because it wouldn't count towards the quorum. Now, if you voted no and you participated in it, then it could pass. But I understand your.
I don't know that I want to vote no. I just don't know that I want to vote yes, so I was just going to abstain. I couldn't find, I don't want to get into discussing the item without opening the item, but I feel like we may need to continue this. Is it a time-sensitive situation?
Councilman?
Actually, I think it, I think a little bit is, was that we delayed it so that we could have this conversation? They did submit a letter. There's an opportunity for us to still be included if we want to, but I don't know when that window closes. I assume that might be part of your presentation, Kara, or not?
I don't have the answer to if it got extended again, but the last council meeting, council directed staff to try to be signatures on this letter. That same night, the letter needed to get sent out, so there was a draft, kind of generic letter that was sent over to the Vera Institute of Justice, so tonight's action would send a revised letter. So I think there is a sense of urgency. You know, I don't know that it couldn't wait for two weeks, but.
Jason, am I allowed to?
Do you mean John?
The Vice Mayor? Just maybe would sway.
John or Jason? Jason's not here.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That was okay. I just didn't know if I got a title change, but it's okay.
Yeah, sorry. John?
It's all right.
Am I allowed to ask the Vice Mayor a question and, or?
Sure.
A statement that may or may make him sway him.
That's fine.
I don't believe there'll be any monetary contribution on this item tonight because we, I believe we have already appropriated funds in the past that could be leveraged on this item, so the ask would be us adding our name.
Well, and that's where my hesitation lies, is not so much the monetary, because as you said, we had voted to go ahead and put some money available. It's that in the information on Vera Institute of Justice, and I fully admit I didn't bother to Google them, but they don't mention what type of client they serve and for what reasons they're facing deportation. And it's a pretty hot-button issue right now as far as, you know, who is facing deportation, and.
Understand.
I can't just blanket, go ahead and support something that I don't know who they're serving. So maybe I'm talking myself into voting no, in which case, if you two gentlemen want to pass the item, so you can sign the letter.
Well, I guess I don't want to deliberate until we have the presentation, so why don't we just?
It's kind of a chicken-and-the-egg thing, right? I mean, we can go forward with the presentation if Vice Mayor Hume decides that he wants to abstain, then like I said, I don't think that would be counted towards a quorum. Typically, you would need a majority of the council to pass a resolution or other items, but because this does not require a resolution, none is presented, it's just a majority of the quorum, but we have to have a quorum actually participating in that. So it's kind of an interesting procedural question.
That is such a nuanced.
Yeah.
Explain the lawyers. What do you want?
Kara, did you get, did you get to talk to Mr. Tang, I believe?
Yes.
You did?
Mm-hmm.
So would you be able to answer Vice Mayor's question with that?
I don't think I can answer your question directly, but I can tell you in my conversations with Marcus Tang, who is the, who works with the California Rural Legal Assistance Foundation, they're the fiscal agent to FUEL, and FUEL is the Sacramento Family Unit Education and Legal Fund. He had told me just a little bit ago today that they have provided information and presentations to 82 families that live in Elk Grove. They have provided three three-hour training events for 88 Elk Grove Unified School District staff members. Those trainings were held at the Falls and Casumis Oaks High School, and they have helped 13 Elk Grove residents with their DACA applications. He said that number is a little bit low, they don't track it, they're kind of manually counting these applications that come in, so I don't think that's a very accurate number. It's probably higher than 13, but that's how they've kind of helped the Elk Grove community in this past year.
And my only focus was helping members of our community. I do recognize that there is some, you know, strongly debated things around this subject, I hear families from our Elk Grove School District, and I hear, I mean, those are the people I'm focused on, so.
Well, you put the prettiest dresses in the window and.
That's the statistic that, that.
I'm just saying.
I know, I know what you're saying. I'm, I would, I would agree with you on that end, but that's not, that's not who I'm focused on.
Okay, make a motion. I'll participate.
Okay.
Well, I suggest we have a staff presentation, there may be a public comment.
Let's do that.
Okay, yeah, we can go through.
Do the presentation.
Okay, so I have a very short presentation, just a verbal one. So tonight's action is to consider approval of a letter of interest to join Safety and Fairness for Everyone Network as a collaborative member with other Sacramento-area jurisdictions to assist with legal representation for immigrants facing deportation. So on January 23rd, council directed staff to return this item for a discussion. This letter of interest is the first step in seeking a future grant award for the provision of immigration legal services for the region. The grant is a one-year seed grant in the amount of $100,000. This letter is a non-binding intent to become a member of SAFE with the intent to contribute public funds to the regional effort. In November 2007, Vera launched the SAFE Network by convening 12 diverse jurisdictions that committed public funding to legal representation for immigrants in their communities facing deportation. The City of Sacramento is a part of this network. Vera wanted to expand their network in November of 2018, and they want to award five jurisdictions this grant that we're discussing tonight. So as was mentioned earlier, there was a draft letter, a letter that was sent. Tonight's action, if the council so chose to sign on to the letter, they would send a revised letter, and we've been working with the Office of Councilmember Eric Gera from the City of Sacramento. I do want to point out that in 2017, the city did allocate $10,000 for similar efforts, and we've recently been in contact with Marcus Tang, as mentioned earlier, to get an accounting for how Elk Grove residents have been served. And that's the conclusion of my presentation.
Okay, any questions? No. All right, no questions. At this point, want to open for public comment. There are no members of the public sign up to speak. Want to close public comment, and counsel direction and deliberation.
Don't look at me to make it.
No. I was gonna say, I don't think there's anything, I don't, I don't think there's anything to debate. I think it's just, you know, there's, there's some more complexity to this issue than, than I think is, you know, I don't, I don't think, I don't think this has any place in that conversation, the more, the bigger conversation. So I'm just going to go ahead and make the motion that we join in on this, on this letter with the Sacramento region and the other cities throughout the United States.
Hi, before I second, I want a clarification. Kara, explain to me how more of an impact if we were to sign on to this letter, because there's no fiscal impact to the city, right? We're not forking up any money.
I would like to clarify that, you know, by, by signing on to this letter, there is the intent that we will contribute public funds to this regional effort. I think that those decisions haven't been made, so there's a kind of a working group that's been, is being brought together by Councilmember Gera, and the jurisdictions that choose to participate need to kind of meet together and decide what type of funding their jurisdiction would put towards this effort. And as mentioned in the staff report, you know, staff could participate with council that's involved in this issue, and we would have to report back to council in the future if there is any, and what the financial contribution would be.
Okay, that would then be a second decision.
That would be a second decision, yes.
Yeah, and just to clarify that, you know, I spoke to Vice Mayor Gera that this is, that range could be zero to, you know, whatever. It would be a conversation that we would have with the other, the other cities in here, and depending on how much or little we'd want to participate, that, you know, it's left on devices. The idea is to have the services available if we needed it. As you heard earlier, you know, there were families and individuals that benefited from it. If we determined that perhaps all that need the help, don't need the help, then we could simply, you know, although we're a member agency, we don't have to put up any money.
Yeah, so I'll reserve my feelings on committing city money towards it, but, you know, certainly for the spirit of it, and I support it, and so I'll second it.
Before you vote, I'd like to clarify the point that I made before. I just looked up the case that deals with this on my handy device. Vice Mayor Hume, you actually can abstain if you so choose, and two votes with a and two votes with a majority, or excuse me, with a quorum present would pass the item. So if you'd prefer to do that. Okay. Got a motion second? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstention?
Abstain.
Okay. All right, let's move on.
Take us on to item 10.3, which is to consider introduction of an ordinance amending Elk Grove Municipal Code, Chapter 1.03, regarding appointment authority to implement termination of city board, commission, and committee members due to unexcused meeting absences and consider limitations to service on multiple boards, committees, commissions. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I'm Jason Lindgren, your city clerk. This item is being returned after discussion at the December 12, 2018 council meeting, where we're doing review of council appointments. And the council provided a direction to come back with provisions in order to have in our code segments for folks when they have unexcused absences from their committees or commissions to be removed if they have three in a row from either regular or special meetings, or if they have a cumulative 30% absent rate for the whole calendar year. That's what this item is returning. Where the language comes from is it mirrors very close to what we have already for our Historic Preservation Committee on attendance. And what it is, is it allows excused absences by the chair of a respective board in order to differentiate whether it's an excused or an unexcused absence. There is one other instance where we have a more stringent policy on attendance, and that's for the Youth Commission, and this is worded for what was being proposed tonight. That's for all other committees. But it does provide wording for that more stringent provision for the Youth Commission to still be implemented, and staff supports that. The Youth Commission is one of our committees where we have a quick turnaround as far as service. And if folks start missing multiple meetings in a row, it starts putting some discontinuity as far as the service on that board. In addition to talking about attendance on the boards, there was another issue that was brought up, and that was to limit the ability for individuals to serve on multiple boards, committees, and commissions. We haven't had a lot of that in the history of Elk Grove. In one instance that we do have, we have one member that currently serves on the Multicultural Committee and the Historic Preservation Committee. At the December discussion, I did pose a option that we can do, which we would limit individuals from serving on multiple boards, committees, and commissions, but we have a very unique scenario with the Historic Preservation Committee in that that committee has two alternate positions. And that what the one provision would be, if you had the ability to serve on multiple boards, it would be that that individual, if they were already serving on one board, they could then serve in an alternate capacity in order to help out. And it's been historically an issue with us keeping that kind of attendance and maintaining the integrity of the HPC over the years. And so that was seen as an opportunity for us to look at the current field of what we have as our one individual who serves on two boards, still allowing them to do that. All of this wouldn't become effective until the effective date of the ordinance, and then we would start doing any of the reviews in the future. So what we would see is that we would start counting the three days absent... or the three meetings' absence after March if this ordinance did go through. We do the calendar review in 2019, but what we would also do is kind of do a preview and let the committee liaisons know what would constitute that 30% absence rate for the calendar year, so that we can reach out to folks if they're having some issues with attendance. Just give them a pre-notice before we go into this kind of auto-termination mode. So if there's any other questions, that's the item that's for for this, and it does have some effect on our item 10.4.
Question?
Go ahead.
Did we have a history of a lot of unexcused absences?
For our committees, what we were seeing when there was a review requested of attendance on committees, the... what was being seen is some of the committees were getting down to about a 70% realm on attendance when it was looked at for an annual basis. When you looked at the history of the Historic Preservation Committee, it has been beneficial to have this auto-termination clause, because we have some folks that they sign up, they come to a couple of meetings, but then we just don't hear from them for a while, and it gets to be a little bit awkward reaching out to them. It gets a little bit quicker when we can move towards the automatic termination and have folks sign up.
Okay. And then in the staff report said we tried to reach Mr. Lindawa, and I think had we not received an applicant interested in the Historical Preservation Committee, I'd probably, you know, take this one out, but I'm just wondering, have we received... were we able to contact him?
He's traveling outside of the country. He actually comes back tomorrow. So unfortunately, and it's been hard, I haven't been able to reach him. Tried via a few contact methods, but haven't been able to reach him yet. But in terms of the appointments and those considerations, that would be under item 10.4. So right now, this is just to implement the policy if these are the direction you want to go.
Yep, thank you. Okay.
Jason, I want to hone in specifically on the excused and unexcused absence approved by the chair. That seems pretty general. What are your thoughts in terms of providing more guidance on that?
In general, I mean, by comparison, if you look at the Youth Commission, it has the more stringent requirements that say that it doesn't matter if it's excused or unexcused. If you reach any of these kind of thresholds, then you would be automatically terminated from the committee. I think the thought process behind having the chair of a board is that it does give some flexibility in the event that there's something that's occurring to a member that could be something for health reasons, in which it's projected that they might be out for a certain amount of time, but that they're willing to come back in order to serve at a future date. And so really, I think we're the... From the discussion from December 2018, using the chair and having this concept of excused absences was to give somebody a room for if there was any kind of extenuating circumstances as to why someone was missing meetings.
So my thought is I do like, you know, clear clarity in this, you know, specifically like the Youth Commission. But at the same time, you know, I'm also sensitive to the individual and their lives as well. We're asking them to serve. We don't know what's going on in their life. I think my gut feeling here is the more clarity we have, the more we can take out any sort of emotions in the decisions that we make. And so that we maintain the integrity of these committees and commission in that we ask them to serve, and it's okay if they can no longer serve or if they have personal issues or life issues that take them away from it. No hard feelings. I don't know. Members?
I'll just say that I recall the discussion in December and kind of putting that in there because, again, a policy doesn't know what's going on with someone's life, and it doesn't know what their intentions are and how earnestly they are serving their appointments. And so I think that the chair would... of the particular committee or commission would be closer to that to determine whether or not they're being blown off or if there's something that maybe a little leeway should be granted. So I hear what you're saying about having kind of a, you know, a line in the sand, but I would like to allow some discretion, I think.
I like that, Vice Mayor. I guess my only concern is we now create inconsistency, you know, throughout the boards and commission. And so that would be where I would be concerned. One chair member may be very tolerant and said, "Oh, I understand. You got to take, you know, your dog to the vet." The other one says, "Well, oh my gosh, you have cancer." You know, obviously, these are, you know, very different. And depending on the chair and how sensitive they are towards a loved one's health versus the health of the individual, we now have a consistency. And so my only interest is to be clear-cut and to be very consistent across the board.
Do you think that could be accomplished, though, with the chair would have the discretion to say whether that absence was excused or not? At that point, you know, they could say, "Well, I know you had to take your dog to the vet, but we're not..." You know, for that example, I mean, they could say that's not an excuse.
Well, I can make the... I can create the scenario where, let's say, the Historical Committee, one of the members says, "Hey, I have to take my dog to the vet." And the chair felt, "Oh, that's legit, right? What if the next chair that came into it and said, 'That's not enough. You need to be, you know, you need to have a life crisis or something that would occupy your time so that you can't participate.'" I'm just trying to get rid of the gray areas so that nobody's the bad guy, right? I mean, I kind of like the Youth Commission is a clear cut. Doesn't matter whether it's excused or unexcused. We feel terrible that your dog's sick or you're sick, but if you can't serve, you can't serve, and we understand that.
I don't agree with that just because, you know, we're... As adults, we all have such, you know, I'd say, complex lives altogether. So I don't know that that is appropriate. I understand why the Youth Commission might have it, you know, just by definition of being youth. But I don't think that should apply to, you know, these commissions and committees that are... as working adults, parents, families, and all those things. I think there's just... there's too much to ask, I think, for our volunteers.
Yeah, but I think my interest is, you know, maybe we don't want to have to be extreme, just like the Youth Commission, right? Maybe we can have a little bit more of guidance, you know, for the chair, such as if you have a medical emergency, you have a loved one that has a medical emergency, then yeah, of course, you're excused, and that qualifies as an excuse. But the ones that, you know, "I'm not coming in because I have a visitor from outside of the town, and I have to entertain them," obviously, that is an excuse to me. But, you know, my concern is to a chair member who may interpret that, "Well, you know, friends are very important. You know, you have a special visitor from outside of the city. You got to play host, and so it's okay if you meet with them and skip our meeting." That's my concern. Obviously, these are extreme, but I'm just interested in clarity.
So I would say that they're not only extreme, but they're kind of single instance happenings. You know, if you've got to take your dog to the vet three meetings in a row, there's probably something pretty seriously wrong with your dog, right? Which is a serious family situation. So I guess that's where I come back to, the chairperson has an idea whether or not they're being blown off or whether or not the person really wants to be there, really wants to serve, but has extenuating circumstances. I mean, you know, I don't know how often these commissions all meet, but to have three consecutive meetings where you're gone, I think that, you know, having a friend in from out of town, they're not going to be there for that amount of time. And so, I mean, I guess, you know, like I say, from where I'm coming from, I would kind of like to have some leeway for the... For those commissions, they know which members are in it to serve and blowing them off and making excuses.
So Vice Mayor, I would support that, so long as we make it consistent with the Youth Commission as well, so that we have clarity across the board.
I think we're making an issue out of something that is very little here. From what I heard from Mr. Lindgren, this is the only issue with the Historic Preservation Committee and not with all the others, right? Attendance hasn't been an issue with all the other committees?
I think when we reviewed attendance for the past year in 2018, what we did see is there were some attendance that got right around that 70% mark. And so there were a few folks that were under 70% annual attendance. The missing consecutive meetings, that's pretty rare unless they charge up and call up a whole bunch of special meetings in a short amount of time. That's kind of a weird scenario that often doesn't happen with our committees. I think when we looked at the balance of attendance, there were some committees where when you looked at the balance of the year, there were some folks that were getting down there to being there less than 70% of the time.
And off the top of my head, I want to say Planning Commission and also Multicultural Committee.
Yeah, off the top of my head, the two of them, we did see patterns with the Planning Commission and the Multicultural Committee. And then there were our issues that occur with the Disability Advisory Committee, but sometimes those are often because of health issues that do face the members on that committee. We see a reduced attendance, so... And they usually cancel meetings completely, just depending on if they can get a quorum.
How is the Youth Commission, then? The Youth Commission, they're pretty good, right?
In terms of attendance, when it's more strict, yes. I think we've had one instance where there was a member that had to step down due to not being able to attend.
No, I mean, I'm sorry. I meant like, you may or may not know. I'm sorry, Jason. I was just thinking, like, if there's any... There's probably no issue to relax it. To the mayor's point, if he wants to go the other way, we could probably relax the Youth Commission to, you know, satisfy your concerns, Mayor, and then we can have it consistent across the board. I doubt we'll have any problems with the Youth Commission all of a sudden not, you know, not showing up.
Right, they've been performing, right?
Yeah, so...
There is a little bit of concern with the Youth Commission, and part of the reason is the Youth Commission doesn't meet the full year round. They typically are going to take a break from May and not be here for most of the summer, and they come back in September. So you already have a committee that's only meeting about three quarters of the year. Beyond that, then you get into issues with... You can run into some issues with attendance that can happen after that. So if you miss three meetings of the Youth Commission, you're already figuring you missed a quarter of the year. Now you have another chance to miss another quarter. You could miss half of the year of service, so...
Well, I'm sorry. That's... I'm back to the original. Let's just leave it...
Keep everything, yeah.
Let's just leave it to the chair, and let's go on.
Well, I'm actually siding with Councilmember Wayne. I think we're finding a solution in search of a problem.
Looking at the item in front of me, so let's just use the chair as like we originally proposed in the staff report.
And just to bring to the full council's attention, I do have a few members of the public that have signed up to speak for this item.
Oh, okay. All right, why don't we do this? Why don't we open a public comment? Let's invite Brian Lawrence up. Following Brian is Randy Becker.
Hey, guys. I just wanted... Just listening to you guys' comments and arguments.
Discussion.
Your discussion, yeah. Just a thought is with, you know, you never know when you have... When you put it in the chair's hand, you don't know what they're thinking, who they agree with, who they don't agree with. I kind of agree with the mayor on this, whereas if you set it... You set a standard, whether it be three absences or... and move on. You know, they know from going into the position that this is what it is. If you miss these consecutive... If you miss three consecutive or four consecutive, whatever, then, you know, then you give up your seat. But if you let the chairman... I'm getting shocked, so excuse me. If you let the chairman decide, you know, there could be personal differences between the chairman and, you know... So there could be favoritism that goes on. So those are just thoughts that I had in listening to you guys' discussion. But, you know, if you set a standard to begin with, they know the standard going into the position, and it's pretty simple and straightforward then. So it was just a thought in listening to what you guys were talking about. So I kind of agree with the mayor on that one. So that way, it leaves no room for, "Well, I didn't know." It's just, you know, you go in, if you miss four consecutive meetings or five, whatever you set it to be, then that's it. So that was just my thought. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Randy Becker.
We're going to call the 10 o'clock rule?
Not at 8:30.
I know that, but the point is, is we're beating a dead horse over nothing, really. That's why I came up here. First of all, the Youth Commission, in my eyes, should be left alone. It's there for a reason. It's there for guidance. To guide young people down a river, to make sure that they're making good choices with the rules set in place. They're not adults. Second of all, as far as the other commissions are concerned, I don't think a number necessarily needs to be part of it, and I don't believe the chair should hold the key to the city. Why? Basically, what Brian just said, people have differences of opinions on what they choose to be gone for. We're asking somebody to volunteer. I've been asked numerous times. I choose not to because I want to... I would not be able to give what I think needs to be done. Everybody's different. I think you hold... Or I guess the question I have is, is this reported back to city staff? If somebody's not there, or there's... Is there a minutes to where people that aren't there, is that being communicated to city staff? If it is, then I think it should be left up to city staff to have that conversation. They're the neutral party. They're the ones that talk to you folks when we bring... or when somebody comes in here to be appointed. Therefore, staff is a neutral point. It's a difference of being the mayor, sitting down, having a conversation, and maybe today, him and I don't get along, but next week, we're drinking a beer together. Point is, is take it out of the chair's position, because that person becomes the bad person. And unfortunately, we don't know what's going on, whether it's somebody's dog or whether it's something of very importance. I've had those conversations, and I know that each one of you in your professional lives have had those conversations. And sometimes, some things are somewhat ridiculous, and other things are somewhat serious, and you really hate to hear the news. So I would make that recommendation. Thank you.
Okay. There are no members of the public set up to speak. Want to close public comment? Counsel, deliberation, and direction.
So, Mr. Hobbs, do we have to have a negative motion to keep things the way they are? Can we just not accept staff's recommendation?
Right, you don't have to do anything if you don't want to make a change. You just leave things as they are and take no action at all.
All right, then I'd like to just move on to the next item.
Okay. Okay. All right, let's move to the next item.
I'll take us to item 10.4, which is to consider appointment of an alternate member to the Historic Preservation Committee. So after we had the appointments from January 23rd, one of the applicants from the Trails Committee submitted their application the day after for the open seat for an alternate position on the Historic Preservation Committee. Because of the ad of not taking an action on item 10.3, we don't have any more issues about serving on multiple committees, boards, and commissions, so there's a lot in the staff report about designating appointments, but we don't need to consider that. We have one vacancy for an alternate position, and we have one applicant.
Okay, I'll move the gentleman forward.
Cool.
All right, well, good. Okay, let's adjourn this regular meeting at 8:36, and we are going back into closed session at 8:36.